Thirteen. Seven, I guess it is. Thirteen, seven, going the north. Is there any other additions?
Madam Mayor, administration has no additions.
Could I have someone move the agenda, please? Councilor Lambert, it's all in favor. Carrie. I'd like to call upon Staff Sergeant Devron Digmire to do his presentation, please. Good evening.
Good evening, very much. Everybody was doing good. So, uh, I won't keep you guys going if they have, uh, if you need me. So, uh, right now, at High Level, we'd have five hard and soft vacancies. We have, oh, sorry. So, we have three vacancies, um, that we call hard. We're waiting for someone to fill them. And we have two people on ODS. They're just unable to work right now. So, that puts us at about thirty-six percent, um, short. So, we're sitting like, uh, that for now. Our sergeant, I have no timeline when he's gonna get here. I don't understand why it's taken so long, but it's getting close to a year since it's been, he's been named. So, um, we'll still have to wait for that. Our two ODS members, one member broke his arm. He should be back able to work this month on, uh, more of administration capacity, which will help me out. So, that's good news. Um, the GIS constable's been named. It's actually, uh, Constable Stewart's wife. She just needs to get her clearance done and she'll be able to join the team. So, that was part of the two positions the province gave us, uh, in the summer. So, uh, that's looking promising for that. To date, two hundred, sorry, two thousand four hundred and fifty-six prisoners. Uh, last year, for the whole year, it was two thousand three hundred and forty-eight. So, we are running more than last year, right, uh, a little more than a hundred right now. Um, for files, pros occurrences, pardon me. Two thousand and twenty-two, we ran five thousand six hundred and forty calls or occurrences. This year, we're up to six thousand and twenty-seven. So, it's about a thousand more calls for service. Um, part of the stats that I, that I forwarded, just to sort of sum them up, compared to last year from January to November, uh, last year and this year, we had a five percent increase in criminal code offenses. Um, in November alone, we had a hundred and forty-one criminal code offenses, thirty-three which were persons, seventy-seven were property offenses, and thirty-one were other criminal code investigations. So, that's sort of it in a nutshell. Um, any questions or?
So, um, the, uh, sergeant who was named a year ago.
Yeah.
Um, does that affect the time that he is here?
No, his clock only starts once he gets boots on the ground.
Okay.
So, uh, I did call district. I understand his wife is also a member. She transferred to Enoch. They've worked separate before, so it really isn't a, an issue. But they're household. So, he essentially is gonna have no house come January. So, we're really pushing for them to cut him loose to get here. Otherwise, he's now gonna have to start renting a place. And we know that's, it's rarely a month-by-month base, so we're really pushing to get him here. Uh, the district officers are supporting that too, uh, the last time I talked to them. So, he wants to get here. He wants to get here and start working, so. And he worked in Fort Familiar before Fort McMurray, so he has some familiarity with the area as well, so.
Is there any other questions from council? Thank you very much.
Just before I go, I'd like to introduce, uh, our newest member. This is, uh, Brady Cherry.
Hi.
He's from White Court, and he got up here the first week of December. We're lucky to have him here.
Welcome to High Level. Thank you, we're glad to have you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good evening.
You too, thanks.
Our next presentation is Sahari Architects. Welcome.
Madam Mayor, I'll let Alex introduce himself.
Hi, my name's Alex Shul. I'm with Sahari Architects. Um, I'm an intern architect and, uh, I'll be lead on this project moving forward.
Okay, thank you and welcome to council.
Um, would you like me to start my presentation or Clark?
Yeah.
Should I start, yeah?
Yeah, please.
Let me share, share my screen here. Think I got bumped off there. Am I back?
Uh, no. We can hear you.
Can you see me?
We can't see you.
Oh, no. Oh. Uh, hmm, confusing. Still nothing or?
Still nothing.
Let me just try sharing my screen.
Your screen is black.
I don't know. Maybe having some technical difficulties here. Okay. Not sure, for some reason, when I share my screen, it knocks me off. Not sure.
Bill, does he have permissions? Does he have permissions under Teams?
Let me see here. So, yeah, that, can you, can you see my camera or nothing?
No, we can't see anything.
Let me try. Let me try a different screen here, hold on. Sorry about this, this is not ideal.
Yeah.
There.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, we can see, uh, backdrop of race cars. There you go.
There we go. Okay. All right, sorry about that.
That's all right.
So, basically, what we'll be going over today is the, um, the new multipurpose facility and how we've basically broken it out into four separate phases, um, as well as, um, the redesign of the floor plan to fit with the new phasing of the project and the, um, changes to the structural system, uh, from a, uh, a typical, um, steel structure to a, um, pre, uh, pre-engineered structural system. Um, so we'll start by going over phase one of the project. So, um, looking at basically the front of house, the, the main front of the building, um, which has been slightly altered, and then the fieldhouse, um, facility. So, looking at, you see, the, the, the administration, the public, and the F, uh, FCSS program space, which have all been kind of slightly reorganized, um, to fit with this new phasing of the project. Um, the overall fieldhouse, um, has had minor, minor changes done to it to allow for some, uh, some reduced structural systems along the sides of the, the building. Um, the overall size has been kept the same to incorporate the four, I'm sorry, the three, um, uh, three basketball courts. Um, but this is another consideration that can be reduced to, uh, to, to, um, basketball courts as well. Um, and the overall second story remains, um, as is, um, with very minimal changes, um, to the, the public washroom. So, um, looking at the original plan versus the revised plan, um, the area located adjacent to the aquatic center has been moved over. So, it is now incorporated into, the administration is now on the opposite side of the entryway and the F, uh, FCSS program space has now been moved to the far end adjacent to the existing school, the school. Um, other than that, other than that, very minimal changes have been made to the overall original, um, plan for this, this first phase. Going into phase two, which would be the incorporation of the full-size ice rink as well as the west corridor that connects the, um, the overall, um, plan together in that, that T-shaped, um, connection. So, looking at this, it keeps basically the, the, the same layout as required for the original, um, ice rink or the, the hockey rink facility, incorporating the west, west corridor to complete that, that, um, that connection to the, um, to the west parking lot of the, the overall plan. Um, and then also the second-story access or basically pedestrian, um, viewing area for that structure as well. Going into phase three, so this will be the incorporation of a secondary ice rink or, um, there has been discussion of whether or not this secondary ice rink will be revised to a smaller structure, which would be a curling-only rink, which would kind of incorporate the existing curling club, uh, within the area. So, this is, yeah, moving forward to the, the full-size ice rink, which fits basically, um, relatively the same as the original plan, simply being built onto the first rink, which has the mechanical room, which it'll piggyback off of. And this also applies for the curling rink. So, looking at the curling rink, it's a much smaller facility. Um, this will also allow for a, uh, slightly different structural system. A reduced cost as to the slope, um, and the height requirements, uh, within the curling facility will be significantly less, allowing for a single-pitch roof, uh, of a, the, uh, pre-engineered, um, uh, steel structure. Um, and then looking further into the future, if we were to u- utilize a smaller, uh, curling rink facility, um, there is, uh, there is future expansion opportunity, whether or not a secondary rink would be, um, would be needed in the future. And this is something that could be added in at a later date, um, or into like a phase five of the project, whether or not that is something that, that the community, um, is looking for. Um, so this is just looking at the, the full-size ice rink using a, a double-slope roof, um, using that, that, um, pre-engineered structural system or going with the curling facility, which would be a single, uh, single slope because of utilizing that, that less ceiling height required for the curling facility versus the, the higher ceiling height required for, uh, an ice rink or a hockey rink. Um, and then moving into phase four, which is the incorporation of the, um, the aquatic center. So, um, some alterations were made to the aquatic center, basically allowing for it to be more of a standalone, uh, facility, whether or not, um, yeah, basically a standalone facility incorporating some additional office space. As the facility grows, additional office space or administration space, uh, will be required. Um, and then overall, the, the facility would remain, um, as initially designed or it has that opportunity to, um, also have a redesign and incorporate that pre-engineered, um, structural system to help reduce cost of that facility, um, during phase four of the project. Um, going into the revisions to the structural system of the overall project, starting off with Brown, which is the, um, the conventional steel structure system, which was ori- originally incorporated into the overall, the entire project. In order to reduce cost, the pre-engineered, uh, structural system in purple has been utilized alongside using some of the lean-to structures off the sides for the mechanical or back-of-house space, uh, further reducing cost. Um, and then the aquatic center, which could either continue to be, um, as previously designed, the conventional steel structure or have, uh, the design slightly altered to incorporate that pre-engineered struc- structural system. Um, and then looking at the pre-end structural system in the renders on the right, um, we're trying to keep with that nat- having that natural light. So, utilizing, um, areas of the structural system to still allow that natural light now that we've switched from that, that, um, that conventional steel structure to the pre-engineered structure. And then lastly, kind of finishing off, looking at how the overall concept and design of the project is still there. It's, it, even though we have phased it and, and kind of it's, it's been altered, the overall concept and design remains like, it's still, it's still the same, same project, but it will just take, be basically broken out into four different phases. And, yeah, that's everything from my end. Any questions or?
Do you have a cost estimate, Alex?
Well, what we wanted to do is prior to a cost estimate, um, have this overall phasing, uh, understood and, and, and accepted, and then we'll go into more of a detailed Class D cost estimation, estimation of the, of the project.
Okay.
Per phase.
Okay, thank you. Council, uh, have any questions?
Am I on?
You are on. Counselor Welkey.
Um, thanks, Alex. Um, can you go back to the, one of the, like, the blueprint, uh, picture showing all four phases? Uh, yeah, that's good. Um, can you remind us or explain how reception would work for the different entities, especially if it's a phased project, um, for like events and security going on, you know, in, in certain areas? I, I don't recall, did we have kind of a central reception area originally with the full plan or?
Yes.
Phasing it?
Let me go back to.
Yeah.
Let me go back to, um, first phase here, oh, second phase. So, kind of looking at how the reception, the original had a reception on basically this side, very similar to what was existing there. This has just been simply relocated into this portion of the building. So, the reception desk and, and security is still all there. Um, it is simply just on the opposite side of the building now.
Okay, and I, I imagine the, the pool would have its own, uh, like, front desk when you walk in kind of thing anyways?
Yeah, that's kind of how this corridor work, this, this, this whole area would have to be, depending on, yeah, whether or not office space and administration, that would be at the, you could basically incorporate that into that, that portion as it becomes, uh, added to the building.
And if events were being held in the arena and the fieldhouses separately, they would be managed by just that main front desk?
Oh, yes, that's from, from my understanding, that's how the original, um, design had proposed.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Um, thank you for the presentation. When we get the cost breakdown, could we, um, not only get the costs of doing each phase one at a time, but doing them all together, doing phase one and two together, phases one, two, and three together, and then phase one, two, three, and four together? Just so that when we're talking to ministers and looking for funding, we can really highlight the costs of mobilization and demobilization up here?
Absolutely, yeah. Basically, a breakout of, if the, how much money do you save doing all at once versus each individual and all over time? Yeah.
Or doing two phases at the same time or three?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, from my understanding, we were also gonna get, yeah, phase one and two, I think, are gonna be fairly close together from what, what I've been, um, what I've been told, so. But, yeah, breaking them out as one, one, two, three, one, two, three, four, is all, all, all separate break, breakouts would be a good idea.
Thank you.
Counselor Lebrion.
I just had a question in regards to the secondary ice sheet. If we were to go with just a curling rink there opposed to a dual-purpose ice surface, what's the savings that we're looking at? Is it pretty substantial or?
I think it would be, yeah, quite substantial, just because if you look at the overall footprint of the building, that, that makes a huge difference. The structure, which won't be as tall, makes a big difference. Um, and then the overall amenity is basically incorporated with the, the, um, curling rink and the, the size of the actual curling rink itself. Um, we've looked into the design, we've had a consultant come in, um, a curling rink consultant, and discuss basically how the facility would work and what sizes we need. So, it would actually, it would, yeah, it would shrink significantly. So, I'm not exactly sure on the numbers, but I know it's gonna be significantly less.
Counselor Welkey.
I'm not sure if the rest of council is with me on this one, but phase two and three may not be able to be separated if we were to build a single ice sheet and then wait for the second sheet or curling rink, depending on the timing of the demobilization of our existing structure. So, if we build a new rink and get rid of our old dual structure, what are the chances of even getting, or, you know, if, if, for example, curling goes away for a year or two, is it even, would you, would you even be able to bring it back? So, I'm, you know, perhaps this is a discussion we'll have later, but, uh, I'm, I'm just kind of questioning keeping phase two and three, or, yeah, two and three separate.
That would probably be a discussion once we had cost estimates.
Mm-hmm. And that was one of the discussions was why, one of the reasons why doing just curling where it's able to, um, because of your existing facility, bringing that together as, as, uh, as one. So, basically, in this option, where the phase two and phase three be very close together, if not in the same bracket, and then whether or not the future expansion of an additional secondary ice rink would be incorporated basically, um, later on down the road.
Any other questions? So, Counselor, are you fine with the design? Redesign? Okay, Alex, I guess we're good with that. Uh, we'll look at some cost estimates. Can you send us your presentation like in a sheet form so we can?
Sure. Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Counselor Jessiman.
You just turned it on.
You just.
Oh, did I? No, it's on. Hmm? Cool, thanks. Um, thanks for the presentation, very well done. Uh, just a question regarding the material, like, we're talking about steel. Is your firm able to look at other, uh, construction material in this design or are you solely looking at the steel structure?
Um, in terms of, well, yeah, we've looked at some other options, but in terms of what this fil- facility is and what, what, uh, the cost, I guess, looking at cost and examples of previous, uh, projects, the pre-engineered steel structure seems to be, um, from my understanding, one of the better and the cheaper options to go. Um, whether or not we go with any other steel or any other structural systems, it might end up being more costly than going with that, uh, the options of, of, yeah, conventional steel structure, pre-engineered, and then, um, lean-to structures on the sides. Um, we can look into some additional options, but, um, from my experience, they, they tend to be more expensive than what we're proposing here. But that being said, yes, we can look into some additional, um, dis- additional, um, constructions, uh, structural options and then, uh, see how the pricing comes out on that as well.
Yeah, uh, no, uh, thanks for that. I, I don't think we need that at this time. Until we get those estimates, then, I mean, we can ta- discuss, I guess, at a later date, so, thank you.
That's it, Alex, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, that was, yeah, that was, that was good.
Have a good evening.
You too, thank you.
I'd like to welcome, uh, Superintendent White McMahon. No, just myself. And I don't wanna look at myself.
He turns his mic on, Ethan.
Turn your mic on.
I can go through it without it, but. The only cord that's here. Yep. Give me a sec. It's probably... Won't show up. Maybe unplug it first. See, it's picked it up. Yeah, I'm usually using three screens, so definitely. Should just pick it up, but. How about now, Bill? That's Bill's flower. Technology's great when it works. Yeah, I can. I'm sure I can. The, the piece doesn't really, it, it just makes me look pretty, that's all. So, you don't actually need to see it, but I'll email it to you. Anyway, we can just start. Um, just wanted to touch base with you guys about the collegiate model. Some of you who have children have been in the presentation, so it might be a little boring. But really, what we're trying to do is sort of flip our data on its head based on what we're receiving in terms of accountability pillar, but also flip the entire education system on its head, which is kind of what we've been after in pushing a lot of things through from our end. Little old northern Alberta, but they allow us a little bit of freedom 'cause they're too afraid to come up maybe, I'm not sure, but it, it definitely gives us a little bit of hope anyway. Sixty-eight percent of our kids don't go to post-secondary. So, that's a stat that I'm not willing to live with. And so, the only way to fix that, I believe, is to bring post-secondary, post-secondary to them. So, the province put out an application for a collegiate model about two years ago. And really what it is, it's a blend between, excuse me, post-secondary and high school. And really what it is, it's a blend between, excuse me, post-secondary and high school. So the kids that are capable at the high school level would get post-secondary credits before they leave. It's a real enhancement around dual credit. We had dual credit for a long time, but some kids will be able to complete like diplomas and even part of degrees before they leave us. And that's our, been our biggest piece. So we're calling it the Building Futures, and we're calling it Getting an Edge on Your Career. The board adopted in the spring a priority that students will be exposed to, engaged in, and build skills in their career path. And so that's our fourth priority, and we're talking about how do we do that in a K to twelve system? Because if you wait just to high school and say, what do you want to be when you grow up, you're a little late. Well, get to grade twelve and they'll graduate and they'll, you'll ask them what they want to do and they'll go, I'm not sure. And that's sort of the situation we're in right now. So we need to, what we're calling is get an edge on your career. So in K to six, we need to expose kids to a number of different career choices that are options for them and get them experienced and exposed in that. And then seven, eight, nine, we develop the interests and aptitudes of them. And then ten through fourteen, some of you might not know, but kids can stay in high school for five years. So we've been in this model where we crank them out, crank them out, crank them out, two and a half years sometimes, get them out, get them out. But if you look at it and at the model and say, what if we keep them for five? And if they're done in two and a half, the next two and a half is done at a college level and parents don't pay tuition. That's a bonus. If you have kids and gone to post-secondary, you know that's a twenty-five to forty thousand dollars a year hit. So how can we partner with post-secondary so we can get around that? So in K to six, we're definitely gonna do that piece in terms of exposing kids to it. And then really ramp up in seven, eight, nine around Career and Technology Foundations, it's called. And then ten, eleven, and twelve, they're still gonna get their core courses to graduate, but they need forty credits at a high school to get a diploma. Those forty credits are kind of scattered all over the place. They can be in pretty much anything, but if we focus kids actually on the career path that they're passionate about and they want and they select, those forty credits can come from there. And those forty credits can also be at post-secondary. So that's where you get the dual credit piece, to get credit in both. We wanted to really check out the collegiate model. There's really, in this country, Ontario has done it for a long time, and of course, the Western Seaboard in the U.S. has done it for thirty years. So we traveled down to the U.S., of course, all the way down through Seattle into Oregon to check out what they've been up to. Of course, lots of corporate sponsorship, a total different model around that piece. But really saw two systems, ones where kids went to school and completed their entire education, including their career path in the same school, or they went to a school and got their core subjects, and then were farmed out into a number of different labs throughout the whole community to get their career path, which kind of fits better in terms of our model. We don't have schools of thirty-eight hundred kids or four thousand kids. We have a whole jurisdiction with four thousand and eleven, so if we put them all in one spot, maybe. So the first place we went to really was all the way into Oregon. And what we saw there is kids at a junior, well, we would call it a junior high level, their high school starts at grade nine, beginning in their in their shop classes, just learning about electricity. And by the end of it, they were going to wire a house that was built by the construction crew. And and then they would, of course, we would have them certified at least in their first-year journeyman in order to be done that. Right now, currently, in Fort Vermillion, we've already started that. The first house is already done, and it's actually coming here. We've been working with Haley around that across from the EMC Church. We will pull permits eventually, but starting to build that plan and and had a proof of concept approved already to start to move forward with that, so that we can actually get out of residence, rental units, that we're we're taking up pretty much all the town rental units, and we will put them into our teacher's, then free that up for town, and then hopefully free them up and keep moving forward in terms of, they're not big houses, they're like eight hundred square feet. They do have two bedrooms in them. Like, I mean, if you get a wife or or husband and two dogs, you probably need to move out. But we don't want them so that you get a rental space that they stay forever either. But one of the most interesting pieces we went to was Henrietta Lacks, which is, they called Hila, which is a health and bioscience center. We currently have a lab set up in high level here at Northern Lakes College that we use quite a bit for HDAs. We've talked to Angie about starting, you know, LPN, and then hopefully bridging that with Athabasca around the RN program too as well. And it is a center that eats, sleeps, and breathes nothing but health. Everything from pharmacy assistant to nursing, and on the bioscience side around prosthetics and those sort of pieces. Like, we saw kids in their senior year make a prosthetic hand out of elastic bands and popsicle sticks and then 3D print it so it actually functions. There is no limit set on where they can go in terms of their career path. They just have an instructor that guides them in terms of where they want to go in terms of a project. When we went into the health place, we saw them, you know, changing bedpans and those sort of things. Of course, they have a couple of dummies there, about ninety thousand dollars. They scream, they pee, they have blood pressure, they have pulse. You can do a tracheotomy, tracheotomy on them, all of those sort of pieces. And we saw the pharmacy assistants actually fill in prescriptions and doing all the side effects and all of that with a full pharmacy at the back, all filled with sugar pills, but the right label. It was just a really cool aspect to see. We went on to Cascadia, and Cascadia was a model probably that we're really looking at, where it had twelve different sort of career paths with hundreds of careers in each one of them. But these were labs that were set up around the community in which kids would go to their core school for their core classes, but then come to Cascadia or go to the collegiate to to learn about their career path. So that's everything from mechanics. In the mechanics, everybody got cars donated. Sometimes they ran, sometimes they didn't. We would have a few up here that we could probably donate. Their goal in the end was to make it run and sell it at auction. And for some kids, it's the first car they ever bought, and it's the one they fixed. We had heavy-duty mechanics, he said he has the best job in the in the in the entire block. All he does is screw up the truck, and then the kids have to, in a team of four, fix it. We luckily were there the day that the kids were working on exhaust, and one kid piled in the rumble seat, turned it over, and the truck started. The hooting and hollering that went on with those four kids was undescribable in terms of success. That's the type of learning. Most of our shops right now are project-based, but they're not career-based around that project. So that's a real shift for us. Flight school is another one. We have flight simulators coming, both one for here, one for La Crete, one that'll float. And we actually have a commercial pilot right now that is going down to get his instructors. He's been there already for a week, and he's getting his instructional license. So kids will have, be able to get their PPL before they leave high school. Maybe some adults too, I think. Culinary arts was a total different aspect. We sat down in this one room, probably ate the best food we ate all week. The sous chef came out, she was in grade eleven, she explained exactly what we were eating. I mean, it was so good, I eat the green things, and I don't really eat green things. But that skill set is just something we don't have at all in our area. They had a little restaurant, only open Thursdays and Fridays for couples' nights, and they were practicing their skills on fantastic food, soft skills, yes ma'am, yes sir, all of those sort of pieces. The last school we went to was Raceback, which was really cool. It was an aviation school. It was built by Boeing, was attached to the Boeing plant, and in between there was the Boeing Museum. So the kids did nothing but eat, sleep, and dream aviation. When they went down for lunch, they were sitting with an engineer from Boeing or an airplane pilot from Boeing, which was kind of cool. Of course, the corporate sponsorships unreal. Their capstone project was to build a solar car and race it. So they built everything, including the solar panels, from scratch and raced it in regionals and nationals, and they're three-time national champions. No limitations in terms of their career path and where they're gonna go. They have water jets and 3D printers and all of those sort of pieces. So we were lucky enough to be selected from the province as one of fourteen projects that got selected, and we got seven million dollars for startup equipment. So most, half of it's on order already. We have three buildings, we have three buildings that we've added to our sort of fleet around that. So one you'll know as Hunter Home Hardware. So we talked with Doug Gramson, you guys all know Doug Gramson family's been here a long time, and I said, hey, you ever thought about a legacy project? And he said, well, I'll have to talk to mom. So he calls his mom and the whole bit, a couple of days later, he says, yeah, we'd like to do something. So we've been working with Doug and the family there, and he gave us that building for, I would say, almost next to nothing compared to what it's worth. And so it's totally renovated. We're just waiting for a small box called the Breaker Box that has been backordered and supposed to ship December twenty-second, so we can't turn the lights on. But flooring's going in tomorrow. Inside that space will be an entire suite of simulators, everything from heavy-duty equipment to airplane to a forestry piece from Tiger Cat as well. So kids will be able to get their heavy-duty, heavy-duty equipment operator. Then we're gonna actually put them actually on real equipment. We have a couple of projects in mind that kids will actually go and move dirt and build some things and those sort of things. And then companies, of course, can hire them. So how can we get them skills around that? That actually is a post-secondary credential that it holds, so that's good. This will be called the Gramson Center, if you drove by the sign, so we named it after the family. In Fort Vermillion, we had a building. It's called CP One Center Fifteen. CP One in Cree means where the river begins to flow, and fifteen is after Maytee District Fifteen and the new local governance in the Maytee Association of Alberta. That's right now where we're building the teacher's. So it starts at one end, goes on, it's on a little railroad track, you pick it up, you push it to the other end, push it through stages. A new one starts, and the last one kicks it out, and it comes out as a house, complete. It will be CSA approved too as well. And then the third one is actually the old Timberbound Shop, which is actually right beside our bus garage. It's called the Hobbit Shell, which my plow teeth isn't very good, but it means the work school. And it's gonna be similar to high level, but what we're adding in both buildings is things we don't have. So the whole manufacturing piece, we don't have in high high level, so that will be in there for sure. In La Crete, what's interesting is we don't actually have a mechanic's bay. I mean, you can pull a car into Robbie's shop, but it's probably a Kia, and you can't lift it more than four feet because you hit a roof. But we don't need a mechanic's bay, we have a beautiful one at High Level Public. So how do we do that, right? Another piece of both of those buildings is pathways. We'll move across the street into both of those. So that frees up that building, which potentially will turn into a visual arts center as well. We've got lots of kids that are involved in art and drama and those sort of things, but yet sometimes we, I believe, fail them in terms of giving them an actual career to move forward with. So it's really about building those twenty-first century skills and and, of course, those career skills that employers want. Can you show up on time? Can you make change when the power's out? You know, those important ones. What do you, what do you do around the, can you work a whole shift without answering the text message on your phone? There's twelve sort of academies, we're calling them. So we have agriculture academy, we've got aviation and engineering, we have hospitality, we have automotive, we have university transfer, bachelor of education, of course, educational assistant, tech and innovation, we have forestry and road building, health and bioscience, visual arts and media design, transportation, that's locomotion, especially at both of our mills, the train conductor, as well as class one. We've got construction and design, that's everything from AutoCAD to plumbing, electrical, construction, fabrication, all of those pieces. And the last one is business and human services, which is kind of the people that we're always recruiting but have to train, much like the town of High Level, I think, too, is when you put an ad out, you you hire the best candidate, and then you work for the next six to eight months to train them. Because they don't usually come to you trained in the same capacity that you you need them or understand necessarily the context of the north. Our goal around that is we need a, we believe in order to teach them business, we need to run one. So we're actually gonna start, we looked around, found a business, I don't think that exists up north, so we are going to start our own coffee roasting business. So it's not about roasting the coffee, but it's about marketing the coffee on the visual arts and media design. How do we market this? Where was it grown, at what elevation? What does it taste like? Hospitality will use it, business will figure out all the books around doing all of those pieces. Also, in human services, we've got paralegal, we've got social services, a social work diploma, all of those sort of pieces too as well. I always say the only one we don't really have is the undertaker, but no one's dying to get into that one. That's my only dad joke I got. So right now, we're currently building teacher's in Fort Vermillion already started. We weren't supposed to start till September of twenty twenty-four. We're gonna build a park model in Quad Three in La Crete Public, which is basically a fancy RV that you don't move as much, and see how it turns out. We have pre-employment heavy equipment technician that's gonna be in La Crete second semester. We have carpentry and welding that's here in high level. We have healthcare aid, doesn't matter what school you're in. And then, of course, we have the equipment that we're in the middle of purchasing to get it all going. The biggest thing is timeline term implementation of all twelve streams, defining those paths in there and the hundreds of jobs. You can say to a kid, you know, I want to be a nurse. Well, what, which one of the fifty-eight you want to be? Because there's more than just one sort of nursing piece. We want to gather some data from nines to elevens to figure out what they really want to do in terms of interest. And then we'll develop a framework K through twelve around our expectations for the model. The biggest shift, what we're trying to do is line up a little bit more with post-secondary. So what you'll see in terms of a shift is that the quad system will probably disappear. It won't go back to a semester system. It'll go to a three-tier or three semester, tri-semester system, where the goal is that kids will start in September and in December write their diploma. We've been a big, we've been a big help to them doing digital diploma, digital assessments. And part of that deal is that in December of twenty twenty-four, our kids write the diplomas in December. It has never made sense to me that they go to Christmas, take a two-week break, and then three days later write the biggest test of their life. Makes no sense. January then through April will be the second, and then, of course, the career path will be in in May through August, depending on if a kid wants to do it for one month or four months. But actually getting them jobs in their field too as well, I think will be a huge success. And that's about it. Clark said I only had fifteen minutes, I was close, twenty. Right, I don't, that didn't count, that was coffee break.
Does Counselor have any questions? Go ahead, Counselor Welke.
More of a comment, that sounds fantastic, Mike. And I don't think you needed your visuals, you were captivating enough.
I've done it once or twice.
That sounds, sounds, sounds fantastic.
I think it's probably the single biggest thing we'll do that changes the trajectory for kids up north. Like, why do we have to ship them out? We're shipping away from family, from friends. We know how much it costs all of us to even live here, let alone if we can save some cash for parents. If they stay here thirteen and fourteen, like, there's no tuition. That's, if they can get two years done, so be it, that's that's worth every penny, I think.
So the, in terms of that not requiring, because it would be the same type of expenses that one, a family would have for their kid going to school anyways, right? Like, through grade school?
Yeah, exactly. So there's, there's no, there's no fees or anything at, as long as they're with us, there is no student fees at all.
Okay.
Yeah. So the tuition, like, for example, if you got your two-year social work diploma, that, you know, they're living at home, so you have that expense. But that's a savings of sixteen thousand bucks that we pay.
Yeah, I can't imagine there's much opposition to all of this?
No, I mean, there's big opposition when you talk about the second topic, which was calendar. And that's because it got out on social media, and it it turned into something that wasn't actually.
That there'd be no summer anymore?
Yeah, that there'd be no summer. We're talking about nine days, but most people obviously thought, somebody told me we were done in March. I'm like, you know, people forget that I have the turkey platter life, and I still have three kids going into school. So I, we will never do anything that takes opportunities away for kids or or, you know, hurt some away academically, so.
Sounds good, thanks.
Jan would like to sign up for.
Pharmacy, yeah.
Counselor Jessman?
Thanks for the presentation, Mike, that was very well done. Two things, what was the name of the program again?
The the name of the program, Building Futures.
Perfect.
Yeah, Getting the Edge on Your Career.
And then what's the long-term funding for this program? Where's, where's the future of that?
Yeah, so here's the interesting piece. Nobody capitalizes on year three and, or year four and year five. Now, you do get slightly reduced funding, so it's a block funding model in Albert Education. So it's year, year one, two, and three get paid the same. Let's just throw out a number, say, ten thousand bucks. It's, it's more than that, it's thirteen-something, but thirteen-one-sixty-eight, if you really want to get technical. But let's say ten thousand bucks, in year four, you only get half of that, and in year five, you get a quarter of that. So in year four, you'd get five, five thousand, and year four, you'd get twenty-five hundred. But no one's capitalized on that money. So the reality is, if you keep them, I believe that I can generate, I believe I can generate a million dollars that will offset that cost, as well as generate money from each of the collegiate. Driving school is one of them, for example. We make money with driving school, not a lot of money, but every penny counts. And so I'm starting to make negotiations with post-secondary, which is also probably very new in the province. We've right now negotiated with two of our partners that if it's our instructors and our facilities, we pay twenty percent tuition. And then if we, if we don't have all our spots filled, because most of these kids in year thirteen and fourteen are gonna be adults too, we can fill it with adults, and again, we get the eighty percent. We can fill it with adults. And again, we get the eighty percent of the tuition to offset that cost. So as an adult comes in, they help pay for the kids too as well. If we have a flight school, for example, and adults want to do it, well, they pay. Well, that'll offset the cost to kids. So it's a different sort of business model, pay ourselves, but, um, I'm, well, I've run the numbers past Norman. If you know Norman at all, he thinks it's going to work. So he, he, he knows numbers well. Yeah.
Right on. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, we have the, uh, November twenty-seventh council meeting, unapproved minutes. Any questions, errors? If not, could we have a mover? Oh, sorry, deputy mayor.
Pardon me, in thirteen-six, where we, um, agreed to have a special meeting, it shows carried, but no one made a motion. I'm not sure if we had a motion there or not.
I don't know if we ever made a motion. We agreed to go for a presentation.
I believe, Madam Mayor, you did not make a motion. It was just a, we'll just take the word carried out.
So I'll move the minutes as amended.
All in favor? Carried. December fourth, committee of whole. Could I have someone move the minutes, please? Counsel Librian, all in favor? Carried. Uh, December seventh, the special meeting. Could I have someone move the minutes, please? Counsel, you weren't there.
I'll move the minute.
Counsel around here trying to trick me up, weren't you? All in favor? Carried. Uh, does somebody want to move the, uh, delegation business from the RCMP? Counsel Lambert, all in favor? Carried. The multipurpose evacuation. Somebody move, Counsel Jessman, all in favor? Carried. And the presentation, uh, by Fort Vermillion School Division Superintendent.
I'll move that.
Counsel Welke, all in favor? Carried. I, I sent my report to you. If there's any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Didn't see it. Oh.
Did I see it? I sent it to you.
I was on paper topics. Anything juicy?
Nope. Other than, uh, the first one, Counsel Lambert.
Just a question, Madam Mayor, about the eighteen buildings that were planned for twenty twenty-three, uh, for Boral Housing. So are they getting new buildings or are they?
No, they moved them from the flood plain, like our social housing, up to, um, the areas one and two.
So that like, then they're, like they're salvageable?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. And yeah, the twenty-five more near twenty-three.
There's still twenty-three left that have to be moved? Okay.
Any other questions? Could I have someone move my report, please? Counsel Librian, all in favor? Carried. Uh, Deputy Mayor.
Uh, December sixth, I attended the McKenzie Regional Waste Management Commission meeting. As Mayor pointed out, we approved our budget for twenty twenty-four. Uh, December the seventh, attended the same special council meeting at the fire hall. I'd like to thank Chief Schmidt for, uh, um, an excellent presentation. It was super informative. I really appreciate it. Um, on December the eighth, attended a land and property rights tribunal assessment workshop in the morning and then in the evening, attended the town's, uh, staff party. Like to thank the staff for putting on a great job, uh, for inviting counsel to share in your, uh, Christmas celebration. To, uh, thank the CEO for his, uh, speech recognizing all of the departments and special, uh, things that have happened throughout the year.
Thank you. Counsel Anderson.
On November twenty-ninth, I attended the High Level Library Board's meeting, uh, in which we passed their budget. Um, on November thirtieth, I, uh, attended the Transportation Society's AGM. Uh, we had enough people there to, um, nominate all and fill all the slots, but just barely. So it's struggling. It, it's running very well, but it's struggling for membership. Uh, and they're busy. They have two active drivers right now with, with a possibility of, well, they would have four come summertime, but they have two active right now and are still looking for more drivers if possible. Um, November eighth, I also attended the Christmas party that the town put on. Excellent. Uh, enjoyed myself. Um, and I also, November seventh, I also attended the special council meeting with the fire department. And that's all I have.
Questions for, thank you. Counsel Jessman.
On December the fourth, I attended the committee of the whole and, uh, as well attended, uh, the staff Christmas party on December the eighth. Uh, while I was late, uh, the ending was, uh, good. It was great to see people having fun and being able to come together, uh, to celebrate and on all accounts. The meal was amazing and dessert was even better. That's it for me.
Thank you. Counsel Lambert.
On November twenty-eighth, I attended the McKenzie Frontier Tourism Meet and Greet in High Level at the Curling Ring. And then on November thirtieth, I also attended the McKenzie Frontier, uh, Tourism, uh, AGM in La Crete with Counsel Welke. Uh, December first, I helped organize the Midnight Madness with the Chamber, went around collecting prizes from businesses. And then on December second, we held the draw. We were able to give over three thousand dollars in gift certificates, local gift certificates away. Uh, there was three winners. Um, then December seventh, I attended the special council meeting at the fire department and December eighth, also attended the Christmas party. Um, great job. It was, it was, my first one, it was a lot of fun. Food was really good. The, the games were hilarious. So great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tell I have to report?
Did you say you had an, uh, AGM in La Crete?
The McKenzie Frontier Tourism AGM. They had a meet and greet in Fort Vermillion, High Level, and then AGM in La Crete.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Uh, Counsel, yes.
Have we received our letter from McKenzie Frontier Tourism? Was it approved by the board?
Administration has not received the letter from MFTA.
The last meeting that I attended, that would mean that at the AGM, that wasn't brought up, but at the last meeting I attended, they were saying they were going to send one out.
Counsel Librian.
On November twenty-eighth, I attended the Peace Library Systems Policies Training Course. And then on the twenty-ninth, I had a High Level Library Board Meeting, um, like Counsel Anderson had said, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Counsel Welke.
On, excuse me, on November twenty-eighth, I attended the MFTA Meet and Greet at the Curling Club in High Level. On November thirtieth, I attended the Alberta Municipalities Town Hall Zoom. Um, did anyone else attend that? No. Um, I know there's a slide deck in our package tonight, but one of the biggest takeaways from that, uh, town hall was, um, the government's currently remodeling the LGFF, which is the MSI. Um, uh, pot of money and there's sort of, uh, um, the, the plan or the, historically, there's been, you know, so much money. I think Alberta Muni is, um, pushing for an increase from seven hundred twenty-two million dollars to one point seven five billion. Um, and especially for infrastructure projects, they do have provisions for one-time project funding. But Alberta Muni's recommendation was for all municipalities to really push for just a increase of the pot in general. Rather than, um, feeling that, uh, you know, one would be a candidate for individual projects. So, um, their messaging for everyone is to push for the, the increase in the total pot rather than, uh, individual project funding. Um, on November thirtieth, I went to La Crete with, uh, Counsel Lambert to the MFTA AGM. And on December seventh, I attended the special meeting at the Fire Hall. Um, fantastic presentation by Rodney and his crew. It went pretty late, but it was, it was well worth it. It was a very, very good and informative presentation. And the tour, you know, we, we can always have a, a reminder of, you know, the intricacies of our departments that we, uh, you know, that we're making decisions about. So thank you. And December eighth, town Christmas party. Fantastic job, everyone. It was well attended. I think it was the biggest one ever. Yeah. Um, so yeah, congratulations to the town for that. It was a lot of fun and that's all I have to report.
Did you have a question?
No, I, I don't have a question. I just have, uh, I missed one. On December sixth, the Golden Range Society had their, their annual meeting too, and I attended that.
Okay. Counsel Welke, any questions? No? All right. Thank you. Could I have someone move council reports, please?
I'll move council.
Counsel Anderson, all in favor? Carried. Uh, the council action list. Any questions? Could I have someone move, please? Counsel Librian, all in favor? Carried. Uh, upcoming events. Could I have someone move that, please?
I'll move.
Counsel Anderson, all in favor? Carried. And then the monthly report by.
Two.
Monthly report to council by administration. Any questions? Counsel Lambert.
Um, just, uh, for the CEO, in the report that we had, received applications for Director of Planning.
Uh, we have had a few applications for that. Haley and I will be reviewing them this week.
Any other questions? Can I, uh, ask? It's not in here, but have we heard any more about our community designation? Oh, I was going to ask that.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Director Gavin does have an update.
I do. Um, I was going to save it for later, but we can do it now. Um, gosh, uh, so, yeah, it's a bit echoey. Um, I had a phone call today and it was about a forty-five minute conversation. She had quite a lot of questions for me. Um, just clarification. Um, there are, I guess, some concerns from the program. Um, on municipalities' ability to implement this, uh, program in lots of different communities. They've had some very specific concerns with volumes of calls. We talked about this at the beginning. Um, you know, that was a concern that I had. Um, but the way that we've built our project plan, we're really putting the emphasis onto the employers. Um, and building a webpage where we can post job ads rather than answering questions about jobs from participants or third-party immigration lawyers. Um, there were a few questions of concern they had about us vetting new businesses that would come to town that want to participate in this program. Specifically about immigration lawyer businesses, which I thought was interesting. Um, so I answered a few of those questions. Um, she talked about some of the follow-through things that we have talked about with FCSS helping us out with connecting uh, participants to local groups and not-for-profits and our welcome package and a few other things. Um, so what I got out of the call was basically, um, she said she was satisfied with the answers I gave and their plan is to give us a decision by the end of this week. I did ask if they have, um, denied designated community applications and she said yes. And I asked for what reason and she went typically, it's lack of housing, which of course is a concern here as well. And we did talk about that briefly. Um, municipal, uh, capacity to implement the program over the longer term. Um, and just, I guess, concerns in terms of connectivity to not-for-profits and being able to support the program and/or relationships with employers and businesses. So I answered the questions the best of my ability. I didn't want to, you know, hamstring us out there and say we could do anything forever, because obviously things change. Um, there was a big concern about participants participating under the stream. And then if, for whatever reason, they lose their job, um, you know, what would the town do? And I said, well, it's a very open question, you know, what kind of circumstance are we talking about? Um, because they could have to switch immigration streams from open work permits to named work permits or vice versa, including the LMIA and all that. So, I mean, it's really a federal responsibility or the program responsibility. However, if we were able to connect individuals with other employers in town, um, to help them get a different job quickly, I said that's something we could do. So we'll see. Um, I guess by Friday we'll know, apparently.
I, I was under the understanding that they changed some of the rules in the, like you have to have something like eleven thousand dollars in your bank account now.
I don't know about that. They, she didn't mention that. That's, it's not unusual. I know when I first moved to, they wanted me to have ten grand or something in my bank and, you know, it's kind of up and down. There's a lot of different, uh, programs you can apply through and that was something she was impressing upon me that, you know, you can advise the business owners that there's other streams. And I said, they are aware. Like a lot of them have been going through LMIA's temporary foreign worker programs. The advantage of this program, I didn't quite say it to her, but it's the permanent residency aspect that they can apply as soon as they arrive. It's more of a community collaboration because the municipality is involved. Um, so yeah, it seems like they've been getting a few concerns. However, if we are approved, they do a big orientation for the program. Um, and then they also have monthly meetings. So if we do come across concerns during the implementation, implementation of this, we can get connected with the people required, um, to, to help us out a little bit. But I, I feel that if we are approved, the volume that we get initially is going to be substantial. I mean, it's every other week, every week, sometimes that, yeah, employers are calling us going, Haley, do you have an update? And it's like, no, I legit don't, but now I do. And they did say, um, if we are approved, we, our approval won't get posted on the website until the New Year. And I went, that sounds good. We don't need it being blasted out there immediately and then we're inundated with phone calls. Cause we have done a lot of prep work, but I'm hesitant to do, uh, too much in case we're declined. So, you know, I don't want to spend resources unnecessarily when there's other things going on. So that's where we're at. So that's update as of today.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
I have two questions. Um, seeing as it's not on the agenda tonight and this is our last meeting of the year, have we heard anything from, uh, metrics on our audit?
Uh, yes, Deputy Mayor, we have. Actually, we were saving that for the administrative discussion in camera.
Certainly. Um, my other question then would be for planning and development. Um, met with province-wide busing service to discuss rural transit operation, options for Northwest Alberta?
Director Gavin?
Yes. Yes. So. Yes. Yes. So, there is a company, you may have heard of them, Coldshot. They swallowed up Greyhound's routes. Um, and the town of Peace River is currently working with them to, uh, put a new line between Peace River and Grand Prairie. And they're very, um, I guess, excited about the idea of extending this to high level as well. And of course, that Rural Transit Fund is out there. Um, there's a bit of a distinction between funds covering operating versus capital, um, and the, the cost and, you know, size of these assets. I have not talked to the town of Peace River yet, which is on my list of things to do. Um, but we did receive a proposal from Coldshot. They're currently doing parcel delivery to high level. So if they did, um, transit, the passenger bus service, it would be five days a week. And they gave us two options. And I think the round trip cost was fourteen hundred, I think. Yeah, it's quite high. Yeah. So, I wanted to connect with Peace River, because chatting to these guys, um, they had a lot of municipalities signed up to this service. Valleyview, uh, White Court, Grand Prairie, a few others. But it was only for a short term. And I said, is that because the money ran out, or what? And he said, yeah, it was provincially funded or federally funded. And then that money dried up, so then they couldn't continue the service. So, of course, we don't wanna get involved in something that would not be sustainable over the long term. So, I entertained the discussion. Um, I know a look, our new EDAs, met with them a couple of times. Um, but I just said I was not interested in moving this forward until chatting to the other municipalities to see what's involved. Um, but yeah, that was something else we worked on last month.
Any other questions? Are we not being recorded anymore?
It's just Teams isn't doing the recording. The system itself is doing the recording. He could queue it up if you wanna.
Okay. Could I have someone move the, uh, monthly reports, please?
I'll move.
Councillor Welke, all in favor? Carried. Okay, moving on to the, uh, council condice.
Uh, Madam Mayor, just for council's information, uh, we had considered as part of this bylaw, or after the bylaw was done, um, having the procedure for a complaint about councillor done through a policy separate from the bylaw. We have been advised that we should probably put a fairly robust system of, um, procedures in the bylaw itself. So, the bylaw has an outline, but it does not have a detailed, and our legal counsel's suggesting that we just put a, uh, table this till we can get that portion put in.
Okay. So, did your legal counsel also talk to you about D of number eighteen?
Yes, she did. And it was her opinion that is implied in the Municipal Government Act. But, uh, you know what, I'd, once we do this, I'll probably just ask Wendell and to come make a presentation on this to council, if council would like. We'll aim for the committee of the whole.
Uh, so what do you mean by implied?
That it does, that stuff is, the way the act is worded, that a councillor having a friendship that could lead to a, um, information or advantage is not allowed under the act.
So, even in small communities like ours?
Oh, especially in small communities like ours.
So, that could, uh, persuade people not to run for council?
That's, yeah, absolutely not.
Yeah. I mean, like, we have social interactions, like, in minor sports, in, like, even the social interaction in the Christmas party.
Yep.
So, I mean, these are, this has huge implications. And respectfully, I did research eight other municipalities in our area, and not one of them have this in there.
The intent of the passage isn't to, for, um, preclude social interaction. It is to preclude social interaction that leads to council advantage.
So, maybe it needs a little bit of rewording, then?
I'm, I can ask her to look at it.
Yeah. Deputy Mayor?
Um, this is my Horizon Report. Considering there's other information, I'll move the, uh, skis table to the January Committee of the Whole.
Uh, all in favor with that council? Carried. All right, the amendment for the fireworks.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I'll pass this to Director Schmidt to address.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Uh, at the Committee of the Whole meeting, uh, last week, uh, council passed a recommendation to allow a one-time fireworks permit, uh, for an event, uh, memorial event, uh, this week on the fourteenth of December. Um, in order to do that, and ensuring the council isn't breaking their own bylaw, um, we wanted to propose an amendment, uh, to council of the existing fireworks bylaw. So, bylaw 557-93, as you can tell by the number, is a fairly old bylaw, um, thirty years old, in fact. Um, so, uh, it does require, uh, like, a full rewrite of the bylaw. But in order for you to, you know, not break your own bylaw for this particular event, we're proposing a quick amendment allowing for, uh, the perm, the issuance of a permit for, for shop goods or low-hazard fireworks during the winter months or the non-fire season, which is November first to February twenty-eighth. So, by making this amendment, that would allow administration just to issue this permit for this event. And then our intention is, in the, early in the New Year, to bring, uh, the bylaw for a full review, uh, to council, uh, to have a, a full, actual rewrite of the bylaw.
Did we not make some amendments to this under the, um, community standards?
No. No, it's not listed in the community standards bylaw.
Was it to sell fireworks, then?
Nope. Selling fireworks is something we would bring back in this bylaw, but it's current, so how, how the selling of fireworks currently works is under the Alberta Fire Code, but it throws it back on the authority having jurisdiction. So, it's, we don't have a bylaw that states it, but right now, we just refuse all selling permits because we have no allowance to sell fireworks in high level. And in the forest protection area, you're not supposed to light them off either. So, um, it doesn't really make sense to have the sale of fireworks in the area. So, that's the discussion we have with, with, uh, with organizations wanting to sell fireworks. So, we just refuse it as the authority having jurisdiction. But we really should have some bylaw backup to do that. So, well, that's the discussion we'd like to have with council in the New Year, uh, as well as, you know, is it feasible to even set fireworks off in town at all? So, we can have that full discussion. So, really, this is just a temporary amendment, uh, until we can rewrite the bylaw.
Thank you. Councillor Welke?
Um, does this temporary amendment include the paper lanterns?
No.
Okay.
So, that's a banned product in Canada, so we would not add that into the bylaw.
Okay. So, it's just, just for fireworks?
Just for fireworks. Thank you.
All right, council. Could I have a motion, please?
I'll move first reading of the bylaw.
All in favor? Carried. Does somebody wanna move second reading? Councillor Librian, all in favor? Carried. Uh, move for unanimous consent? Carried. Oh, sorry. Does someone wanna move it? Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Carried. And third and final reading of the bylaw? Councillor Jessman, all in favor? Carried.
Um, Madam Mayor, uh, item twelve point three is no longer required, 'cause you've just delegated administration the right to grant that permit.
Okay. So, that's starting at twelve, right, or at two?
Two.
Okay. And, so, moving on to twelve point four.
Uh, Madam Mayor, Director Phillips will walk you through, I think, some minor changes to the budget, but, um, discuss it.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, so, as per our discussions at the Committee of Whole meeting, I did, um, do an overall variance for the cost of living adjustment on salaries and wages, um, for two percent. And then I also included, um, our employer contributions. So, we have a new contract that's deferred for January with, um, Group Source, our benefit provider. And, um, that contract currently, it is not finalized. Um, it's still in the negotiation stage with Group Source. Um, Lane Quinn, our consultant, is, is working on that. Um, but, um, their general, um, their draft of that contract is an increase of thirteen point nine-two percent of our benefits. So, I did include that in our employer contributions, just to make, um, it more accurate going into the March or April, um, final operating budget. Um, and there was, um, also seven, for major things for finance and administration that I, that I added was, um, we did have the discussion to add in our HR and organizational review, um, with the consultants. So, I did add in the seventy thousand for that, um, into the twenty-twenty-four capital projects for transfer to projects. Um, and that's on page four of forty, if, if you guys are following. Um, but anything else, um, major changes, and that could be maybe more directed at Director Gavin, is, um, it was noted in the Committee of Whole meeting that we were waiting to put in our NRED, um, grant schedule and our actuals for that. So, we did update, um, the economic development, um, operating budget fully, pretty much all the revenues and all the expenses. And we did, um, put in, uh, twenty-twenty-four, um, NRED grant application in there for the community promotion task force, I believe it. So, Dr. Gavin will be applying for that, um, in December for funds towards that task force, if approved. If it's not approved, we'll just remove it from the budget before March. Um, but yeah, if there is anything, um, anything else, I did, um, add in on the last page for the non-functionals, that, um, our meeting on December fourth at the Committee of Whole, we, any added expenses after that was three hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred and nine dollars total. So, that's the only difference that we have put in there since the Committee of Whole meeting. So, if there is any questions?
On, on page eleven, you, you, on salaries and wages under community enforcement, what did you mean remove CPS and add seasonal bylaw?
March, it was. Um, that was, uh, removing, um, the current, we have two CPS budgeted for, in there. Um, so that was just removing the one that's at the level of CPS two.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Any, Deputy Mayor?
Oh, it was my Horizon Report, so I'll move the recommendation.
Is there any other discussion? Just a second, we'd have a question here. Why? Um, I just was wondering why we removed the director travel costs, or reduced them from twenty thousand to two? They're not allowed to travel anymore?
Well, no. So, we, because, um, Director Gavin works remotely, so we do have travel costs in there, um, budgeted for her to come up, I believe it's quarterly, or when, when is she's required to be here. So, that is a cost set. So, with the new position, um, we aren't budgeting for that, so.
I just thought it was.
Yeah. She's not allowed to go anywhere.
Okay. Um, Councillor Lambert?
When do we discuss the capital budget again?
So, capital budget will probably come a little bit in dribs and drabs in the New Year, but there is, we're waiting right now on pricing for a lot of the stuff council discussed. So, I'm hoping we have something for the pieces that need to be ordered at the January eighth meeting. But you don't have to finalize it again until the final budget in May. But, uh, yeah, there are some items that we're gonna wanna proceed with as soon as possible.
Yeah, that was my concern. Thank you.
Council?
No.
Okay. See, no other questions? Deputy Mayor has a motion, all in favor? Carried. Um, twelve five, request for mutually a decision.
Uh, Madam Mayor, that was Horizon Report, but if there's any questions, uh, Director Schmidt can address them.
Any other questions? Can I have a motion then? I can't remember who it was.
I think it was my Horizon Report.
All right. Councillor Welke makes the motion. All in favor? Carried. Um, request for holidays.
Madam Mayor, Director Phillips will address.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, so, um, as for HR policy, council, um, does have to make the approval of changing our operational regular town, um, office hours. So, last year, um, we did, um, bring forth that we would close the office for the Christmas holidays. Um, but this year, the Christmas break falls on a Wednesday and Thursday, the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. Um, we will have the office open those days, but, um, administration's requesting to shorten the hours open to the public from ten AM to three PM, just to allow the staff that are coming in to just have some more administrative time to, um, work without being open to the public or having access to the public, whether it's the phone, answering the phones, but still being open for those month-end transactions in person. We do have a lot of, um, residents that come in after they get their water bill and come in and pay and wanna clear up of any, anything, or even questions, or planning for, um, FCSS events, New Year's, et cetera. So, we will have the office open, but it is council's decision whether or not it's approved to shorten those regular office hours.
Council?
I'll move.
Could I have a motion? Okay. Could I have a motion? Councillor Jessman, to shorten the hours? All right. All in favor? Carried. Mary Jessman. All right, um, request for the pay grid.
Uh, Madam Mayor, uh, Director Phillips will present that as well.
Um, so, Mayor and Council, um, so this, um, came from the discussion at our Committee of Whole meeting, um, to talk about our, uh, cost of living adjustment. And I did include, um, all of the information from the Consumer Index, um, report, just 'cause I thought it would be great information, not only for the public, but just for council to know that, that two-point-one percent increase in Alberta, um, there is quite a, quite a bit of increase when it comes to that electricity and, um, accommodations, et cetera. So, I wanted to make sure that you had all the information, um, from that report. But this would just be, um, approving the proposed, um, two percent cost of living adjustment, um, effective January first. And then administration will, um, apply that to all of the salaries and wages going into the New Year.
Does somebody want to make the motion to approve? Councillor Jessman?
For alternative one?
All in favor? Carried.
That's three.
Um, uh, request for decision for the NRED grant.
Uh, Madam Mayor, Director Gavin will present that to council.
Hello. The, uh, NRED, uh, grant program is open for a second round. So, it did open back in October, and we've been kicking a few ideas around and looking at some of the projects that we're doing next year. Um, trying to build off of the current projects that we have on the go right now. So, that's, um, a much larger scope than this one that we're proposing. But with the new community promotion task force, um, some of the ideas that were brought forward in that were signage and, uh, I guess, general beautification. And with the STIP application for, uh, a hundred av as well downtown, um, we thought that doing a wayfinding signage strategy might be a good idea. So, this would cover the entrance, um, entrances to town, as well as directional wayfinding, um, um, downtown parks, public facilities, um, and working with the businesses as well. We, we have granted a couple of, well, one at least anyway that's still there, temporary, um, sign for a business located off of Main Street. Um, but we were very hesitant to put in a permanent permit for things like that before we had a strategy for the rest of town, particularly the downtown area. Um, so this group, um, if, I guess, approved and we can submit this application, would work with a consultant and graphic designer to come up with, um, signage packages for the different types of signage that we would, um, allow in towns. It's a bit more of a uniform approach. Uh, I did take a look at, so, a few, I did put some links in the, um, R F D. here, and in the last round, the town of Fox Creek was approved for one. I haven't found any documents from them, but they got two hundred thousand towards that project, so it's a pretty hefty plan.
I was thinking this hundred thousand won't, uh, for our main street sign.
No, it won't, it won't. Um, so I came up with a hundred thousand based off of just recent, um, projects that we've dealt with the consultants and the graphic designers. The hourly cost isn't that high, but if we're going to be doing, uh, lots of community engagement and that type of thing, it gets, uh, pricey pretty quick, so, yeah, that was my thought, or our thought.
So council, are you in for fifty percent?
Question?
Yes.
So if we, we apply for the gr- um, apply for the grant, but do we need to know our costing ahead of time?
Um, it's one where we can, what we did last year was we submitted, uh, historical invoices to prove where we came up with the numbers. Um, so just because of recent projects we've done, we are aware of what consultants typically charge. Um, so we can just put together some invoicing like we did last year as our proof, I guess, of costing. Uh, it's probably higher, saying a hundred thousand for a strategy like this, to be honest. I originally had it at eighty and then bumped it up, but, yeah, it's a rough estimate. I mean, we could get a quote, but I'm a bit leery considering the grant deadline is December twentieth.
Right, and then, and then if you're approved, though, is there, am I just missing, is there caps on it, though, or like, do they pay fifty percent of?
It's a fifty percent matching, so the most we can apply for is two hundred thousand.
Okay, okay.
So, yeah, they, you have to do fifty percent matching, so if we wanted two hundred, we'd have to put up a hundred. Um, and it'd be like last year, so when we applied last year, we applied for a hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred, and they approved us for ninety-nine, five hundred. Some of the things we applied for were ineligible because it was travel outside of Alberta, and I guess I missed that fine print.
So you could end up doing the project, but then some aspects of the project might not be eligible?
No, no, we will know ahead of time. So bef- when the grant, uh, agreement comes, it will state everything that they are putting funds towards and exactly how much they're funding.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Could I have a motion, please, then?
I can make the motion for alternative number one.
All right then, all in favor, council? Carried. Thirteen point four. How many library board appointments do you need?
Madam Mayor, Director Beck Clark can, uh, present that to council, answer any questions, or try.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, administration, sorry, has received the library board's recommendation for three appointments to the board, um, and we're asking the council to approve the recommendations that the board has put forward.
Counselor Jessman makes that motion? All in favor? Carried.
Thank you.
Take some good people there. I am down. Briefing note for the Bushy Fire Agreement.
Uh, Madam Mayor, uh, this was requested at the, uh, at the special meeting, uh, last Thursday at the fire department and leading into our meeting with the Deni Talk Council tomorrow. On the council accepting the library budget.
Okay, could I have a motion to accept the library budget?
I'll make the motion.
Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carried. And then, um, cor- correspondence for information? Could I have someone except that for information, please? Counselor Lambert? Oh, all in favor? Carried, did you all read the unique presentation? That was quite interesting. All right, so, question period. Do you have any burning questions today?
Yeah, I would as well.
Do you want to come up here?
Oh, no. I'm, uh, I just never, I never even knew about this multi-purpose. And, uh, one of the things with all this talk that, you know, they put up there, I never heard anything about evacuation. Nobody, you know, we talked for a whole, and all this other stuff, but what if, like, we have a serious evacuation again, why don't we have things like shower rooms and our kitchen and, and more facilities for people that are going to be evacuated there?
Uh, you're exactly right, and that's what we've been working towards since Chuck A, and so this facility, um, would have those amenities, and it would be able to house, you know, a thousand people. And, uh, so we've been lobbying both the federal and the provincial governments. And, uh, of course, at this point, we don't have any commitment from e- either, either of them, but, uh, so we scaled back our, our multi-purpose because they won't build a standalone evacuation center. So we scaled it back, that's what the presentation tonight was about. And then each of those pieces would be added as we got funding.
Uh, and, uh, one of the other things I was thinking about, you know, when you go into downtown, I've heard you're trying to help people unify the businesses downtown. And I was just wondering, like, is there ever going to be Indian Garden with that old S O. lot that is like the, you know, when you go over River back, and that used to be the wall for anything in the town, you know? And that, and I mean, I know McLeod's is supposed to come down to here, you know, what's the guy that bought food for there? So, I mean, uh, what, you know, what are we going to, what are we going to do, like, to draw people into our old part of town?
Unfortunately, that is a brown site that's owned by S O., and in order for S O. to sell, they have to clean it up. And in order for them to clean it up will cost them millions of dollars, and they're just happy to sit there as a brown site. We do lobby to, you know, get rid of it, but the only thing we can do is pave over it. Without disturbing the soil.
You know, like, I've, I've heard a lot of things that have come this year, they're talking about negative economics, you know, news coming out for it.
Yeah.
And, you know, just thinking about how we can, you know, just help the downtown stay viable.
Right, and I guess that's what we're trying to do, and you're right, too bad they wouldn't take McLeod's down, I don't know what we can do about it. But it is, I don't know if it is condemned, Rodney, or I know the floor, I know the floor is rotten, and that's one of the reasons.
Well, I think they're cleaning it up this year.
Yeah, that was one of the reasons that they couldn't sell it.
Oh, I just, I was just, I was wondering, I was just wondering about, you know, like, I think we should all get together and try to figure out how, if this is going to be, you know, a financial, if things keep going up in price, how, you know, to support and come up with different new ideas.
Yeah.
To keep our downtown viable.
Mm-hmm.
You know, like, maybe move two businesses in with one spot, you know, like, try to generate, like, maybe put FedEx by the post office, you know, a pickup spot, or just different things that we can get them, so that just don't put a post office, is all?
Yeah. Yeah, that's a very good idea, and you know what? We have been trying to attract businesses down there, but it's difficult when most of the property is owned by absentee land owners.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I mean, look how long, uh, you know, the ready checks.
May we remind them of the beautification that has been approved?
Anyway, that's it, um.
Well, thank you for coming and bringing your concerns, and we definitely appreciate it.
Happy New Year.
Same to you. All right, so that ends our, uh, public portion, and, uh, could I have a motion to move in camera, please? Counselor Lambert, all in favor? Carried.